Thank you, Ms. Phil. Before we continue, just wanted to actually hand off to Executive Director Carla Platesh Howell. She would like to share a few words.
Thank you, Commissioner. Board members, before we dive into elections, I just wanted to remind the board that last year, we had the honor of having Los Angeles County Department of Children and Family Services Director Brandon Nichols serve as our honorable vice chair. And we wanted to note that Director Nichols is not here today, as you can see, because he's representing Los Angeles County on the Children's Service Committee of the County Welfare Directors Association. That's pretty tremendous for Los Angeles County. And as you know, I wanted to remind some of the commissioners that were here last year that our typical process has been that the chair's appointee serves as vice chair. And our chair last year had made an exception to have Brandon Nichols serve in that role. So we just wanted to take this time to remind the board that there had been that exception last year, and we want to take this time to really thank Brandon Nichols and share that with Commissioner Ramos to carry that message on behalf of all of us. So with that, I will turn it to you for the election.
Thank you so much, Executive Director. I can share that Brandon Nichols has been honored to help support First 5 L.A. Obviously, it's a very important agency, and wonderful work is being done day in and day out. So thank you for that. All righty, everyone. So first order of business for the new year is to nominate a new chair for 2024. And do we have any nominations for chair?
I nominate Holly Mitchell.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner. It is therefore ordered. Congratulations. Supervisor Holly Mitchell is our board chair again for 2024.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Well, thank you. You're welcome. Good. Thank you very much. I appreciate that, Mr. Ramos. Let's go ahead and get started, and Happy New Year and Happy Black History Month. We're going to see everyone again. Good. Glad that we were able to have closed session so we could not only handle the business, but have a little lunch and catch up with each other. So it was good talking to everyone. At this point, we're going to move on. We're going to continue in the vein of elections, and we'll now enter into the election of a new vice chair. Do I have nominations for vice chair?
I nominate Summer McBride.
Beautiful. And do we have a second? Thank you. Are there any objections? Seeing none, we'd like to welcome Ms. Summer McBride as vice chair of the commission. Appreciate your willingness to serve. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number four. Since I see a full House, Ms. Phil, so I don't think we have any commissioners who are requesting the board's approval to participate remotely, right?
We surely don't, Supervisor.
How about that?
Everyone is here in the House.
Wonderful. So we're going to move on past the AB 2449 stuff. Moving on to agenda -- very technical word there. Moving on to agenda item number five, our report out in closed session of the board of commissioners. Item five is an information item on the report back from today's closed session. So let me hand this over to our counsel.
Yes, Chair, thank you. So earlier this afternoon, the commission had a closed session with two items on the agenda. There was discussion amongst the commissioners for each item, but there was no reportable action taken by the commission.
Do we need to have public comment on that report?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item six, which is our consent agenda. All should have had the opportunity to review the various items listed in our consent agenda. Let's open it up. Are there any questions? Are there any items anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing none, let's open it up for public comment on our consent agenda.
Madam Chair, confirming there are no public comments on the consent agenda.
Beautiful. Can we please call roll to approve the consent?
Robert Byrd?
Yes.
Alma Cortez?
Yes.
Barbara Ferrer?
Yes.
Astrid Hager?
Yes.
Abigail Marquez?
Yes.
Summer McBride?
Yes.
Marcella Ramirez?
Yes.
Kara Sagala?
Yes.
And Holly Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Beautiful. Moving on to agenda item seven. Which is remarks from me. So before I begin today's remarks, it should be noted that there has been a rotation of voting rights among our county departments. For the year 2024, the Department of Public Health will rotate back onto the First 5 L.A. Commission as a voting member, and the Department of Children and Family Services will become a non-voting member. In addition, the following committee assignments have been made. Executive Committee will be chaired by our newly-elected vice chair, Summer McBride, Robert Byrd, vice chair, Marcella Ramirez, and Carol Sagala will round out our executive committee membership. Moving on to Program and Planning Committee, Robert Byrd will chair, Astrid Hager, vice chair, Alejandra Alba -- help me.
Albaran.
Albaran. Moses, Jacqueline McCroskey, and Dean Tilton will serve out on the Program and Planning Committee. Budget and Finance Committee, Marcella Ramirez will chair, Dr. Ferrer will vice chair, Alma Cortez, our brand-new appointee, will serve our fourth -- yeah, fourth district replacement on Budget and Finance. So let's give a round of applause to all of our -- Thank you to our CEO for helping shape our committees. I want to thank the board for the nomination to serve as your chair. I will continue to work hard and serve you and be held accountable by you. Both Carla and I were new to our roles last year, but I think we've gotten in our stride. We got through a really productive, engaged strategic planning process, and I thank you for your patience with both of us, and I think we got a great product as a result. We want to welcome the newly-appointed committee members, and we hope everyone is committed to continuing this work into the next phase. While we are aware of kind of our fiscal reality, the state's fiscal reality, I feel really good, and I hope you all do as well, in terms of the responsibility we are taking, that we have not put our head in the sand. We've confronted the reality of the ballot initiative, how it's impacting our bottom line, and we're going to lead this organization with the resources that are available and be creative as we seek new opportunities and think creatively about how we continue to do this really important work. So I thank you for your partnership on all of that. No, assuming I don't need to call public comment on my report?
That is correct.
Thank you. We'll move on to item eight, which is our Executive Director's Report. Carla?
Thank you, Chair. And before I share some comments, I wanted to follow up on what the chair just shared and introduce our newest board member, Abigail Marquez, who will share just a little bit of background. We did this back there, so she's got a little practice.
Thank you, Carla. It's wonderful to be here. Okay, this is my first trial here. Just really delighted to be among all of you, to learn and do my part to uplift the work, the incredible work that you all have done for the past year, especially with a strategic planning process. Just want to thank Supervisor Han for appointing me to this board, and then, of course, to Supervisor Mitchell. But I have the privilege of serving my day job as the general manager of a department in the city of Los Angeles. It's the Community Investment for Families Department, and our department is grounded on the mission to advance programs and policies that alleviate poverty for families primarily in the city of Los Angeles. I've been very fortunate to be a part of a number of really progressive anti-poverty initiatives, such as our Guaranteed Income Program that reached 3,200 families during the pandemic. We did a lot of work to support families who were vastly impacted by COVID-19 and continue to do this work. We have a relationship with the county on a number of initiatives. We work to support first graders across LA Unified School District, where we offer a free college savings account. That's our Opportunity L.A. program. And by spring, we will have 100,000 students enrolled in our program. We have a partnership with LA County as well to support families who can claim the earned income tax credit and the child tax credit. We see those as powerful tools to help alleviate poverty in our city, and just a number of other initiatives. I'm really excited to just come in and roll up my sleeves and be of service to you all. So just really excited to get started. Thank you.
It is lovely to have you here, Commissioner. And for the First 5 L.A. team here, commissioners and other members of the public, we are so thrilled to be having our first 2024 meeting with you all and launching it during Black History Month. My daughter is in second grade and has come home every day this month with really remarkable stories, stories of perseverance, stories of analysis of hope for the human condition, and some pretty stellar individuals in our American history. We are really, really blessed that my daughter has an educator who shares stories of the likes of Ruby Bridges, of George Washington Carver. And, you know, Carver, just two examples. Carver was a tremendous inventor that really changed the way we look at our farming conditions so that all of us can use soil, and farmers use soil to feed all of us. And many of you know that Bridges represents the true implementation of Brown v. Board of Education. In 1954, one of my favorite cases, Brown v. Board of Education made it really, really clear that separate white-only public schools were illegal, yet law was not enforced, actually, for many years. And it was not enforced on several ways. One, completely just ignored, or two, what we now call structural racism, where there was things like entrance exams for black children to get into these white schools, exams that were impossible to pass. But little Ruby Bridges in 1960 was one of six children in New Orleans that passed one of these entrance exams. And the bravery of her family to say, you could go to the local white school only and get a different type of education. And many of you know this image. Many of you know the image of little Ruby Bridges walking up to this school, and this moment is captured in pictures where we see this precious six-year-old immaculately dressed up. Yes, white bows and little pigtails, and this tremendous posture of dignity and bravery as U.S. Marshals surround her as she's walking straight into the school. And this little girl's bravery is one of the examples of what turned a law into reality. Brown v. Board of Education was not being implemented. She was six years old after it was implemented. And this is -- both of these are but examples of the many things that our children get to learn during Black History Month in schools. And at the same time, I want to share what my daughter's teacher constantly shares in the classroom, that while Black History Month is a special month that reminds us about the beautiful color in all our history, in American history, and how it has been shaped, somehow we cannot boil down -- this is a month for us to pause, where we cannot boil down Black History Month to the greatest hits of really incredible individuals or the greatest hits of events, but rather it is about a reminder about our shared experience, the experience of African-Americans in this country, either high, low, obscure, super-famous and popular, sitting next to you, and how ultimately these experiences, this history has shaped, has challenged us, and strengthened the country we live in. And Black History Month is really about taking a look at that past so that we build a better future. And I love hearing these stories from my daughter as she comes up to our dinner table because it reminds me of the strategic plan we all passed, and it reminds me that we're in a moment where we're being really clear about our equity direction, our direction of baking in equity, questioning structural racism in our country. And I am really proud that we unanimously passed a strategic plan that has us looking at some of these issues and just really practically and really looking at what making this strategic plan of reality looks like for all of us. In 2024, what you will see from the First 5 L.A. team is looking at tactics that really look at these equity issues. In the next six months, we plan to do this, and we'll report back to all of you on several things. One is an inventory that analyzes, is our strategic plan really doing those things that you all charged us with? And that will be an inventory that you will hear. You will see our data team lead an analysis with many partners here in the sorshoe and with partners in community to disaggregate data and really get an understanding where we see some of the largest gaps to access to early care and education, to well-being. And you will see strategic opportunities. Yes, as funding goes down, where do we double down on some of our funding? So for the next six months, this board will hear a lot of that. And then for the next several meetings, we will focus on sustainability. So today, what you will hear, we will start some of these discussions. To live into our new strategic plan, we need to make sure that we are sustainable and are not creating fiscal cliffs. So today, you will hear some of our thinking for sustainability. First and foremost, JR Nino will present an overview of our building, looking at internal assets and opportunities for sustainability there. And you will hear from our Home Visiting Director on an overview of home visiting and looking at long-term planning, but with the theme of sustainability, with the theme of how do we work in partnership together to make sure that we're making these strategic decisions about funding and making sure that we're keeping equity centered in that work. And lastly, Chair, we want to share our team members, First 5 L.A., really wanted to connect with the board, so we've allotted some time at the end of the meeting. If any of you have time to stay just a little bit longer, our team is here and would really love to connect. So thank you, Chair. Thank you, board members, and I will turn it back to you.
Thank you. For those who were able to stay after the board, the end-of-year board meeting, it was so delightful to host us outside and to be able to share time with each other and the team. So I look forward to sharing some time today as we talk about 2024 and what that looks like for all of us. So thank you very much. Any questions or comments on Carla's report? Okay, beautiful. Seeing none. Thank you for that. I have a book on Ruby Bridges I'm going to bring you to take to your daughter.
I will take it. My daughter's been asking for Ruby Bridges's address to write her a letter.
Okay, so Ruby Bridges, when she wrote her book, maybe 20 years ago now, she came to a Crystal Stairs All Staff and was our keynote speaker, so I had the chance to meet her. So I'm going to find pictures from that, and I don't remember if she lives local or not, but we're going to find Ruby Bridges for the seven-year-old. We're going to find her. I'm going to read the book first. Was she? Fabulous. Yeah, because she's a just young woman, but I feel like she was living in LA when we brought her to the Crystal Stairs All Staff, to hear her speak. Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item number nine, where we're going to waive Governance Guideline I to amend the strategic partnership with Child Care Alliance of LA in the amount of $131,500 for a total of $822,392 through June 30, 2024, and authorize First 5 L.A. staff to complete the contract amendment. This is a written-only item, but staff will be providing some brief comments on this item before we actually take action. Thank you.
My name is John Wagner, and I'm a member of the board. And all the other officers of the board. In order to address item nine, I wanted to make some brief contextual remarks. And as you mentioned, Madam Chair, in the board materials, there is a board memo, and staff is recommending waiving one of our governance guidelines by taking action in this meeting at the same time we're presenting an item. Given the fact that we do have a fair number of newer board members, we wanted to provide a little bit of context for this. So our governance guidelines were established, drawn from best practices on how to support a board and conduct business in public sessions, in an effort to enhance transparency and promote consistency in how we bring business before the board for action, also ways in which we can increase accountability, given our declining revenues, as folks are aware of. These governance guidelines were adopted by the board in 2014, and a copy of these guidelines are included in your board materials for your reference. And really, it adopts 10 practices. In adopting the guidelines, the board also said, we recognize there are unusual and in some cases, emergency situations where we want to waive these guidelines so that the board can continue to be nimble and responsive to the needs of the organization, and we can waive them with seven of nine votes. Today, for item nine on the agenda, we seek to waive the practice of ensuring that we are not asking for action in the same meeting we're presenting an item. So we're asking you to waive that principle, that governance guideline. As the chair mentioned, item nine would amend our existing strategic partnership with Child Care Alliance of LA in the amount of $131,500. Your waiving of this guideline would allow us to take action, and the rationale for that and the reason staff is recommending that is because we are under a tight time constraint in order to do this work and spend these dollars by June of 2024. So with that context, and these dollars are being used, as you see in your board materials, to support the work of the Dual Language Learner Campaign that had entered last year and can be expanded with these additional resources. So with that, I'll turn it back to the chair, and if there are any questions on the actual contract or work.
Thank you. And just as I understand it, it really is what I would consider like a procedural vote to allow us to waive our own policy and take action the same meeting where we're hearing about it.
That's right. And the higher vote number.
Got it. Is there any questions from commission members? Let's open up for public comment.
Confirming there are no public comments on this item.
And we're going to take a vote on it now, correct?
Yes, if we can get a motion first.
Perfect. I'll entertain a motion in accordance with what's being asked of us under item number nine.
I move to waive Governance Guideline number one.
Thank you. And so we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Robert Byrd?
Yes.
Alma Cortez?
Yes.
Barbara Ferrer?
Yes.
Astrid Hager?
Yes.
Abigail Marquez?
Yes.
Summer McBride?
Yes.
Marcella Ramirez?
Yes.
Kara Sagala?
Yes.
And Holly Mitchell?
Yes.
We have nine out of nine votes. Motion is passed.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Moving on to agenda item number 10.
I'm sorry, Chair. Since that was just a motion to waive the governance guidelines.
Now we have to actually take the vote?
Right. Can we take a vote on the other -- there are two other recommendations by staff, which is to amend the strategic partnership and then to authorize First 5 L.A. staff to execute that amendment.
I will move that we will amend the strategic partnership. I'll entertain a second. Please call the roll. Oh, question?
And if you like, Chair, you can combine the two.
Oh, great.
I don't think we have to take separate votes.
Okay, so I amend my motion. I will now move that we amend the strategic partnership, and we adjust the amount to a total of $822,392. I'll entertain a second.
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Robert Byrd?
Yes.
Alma Cortez?
Yes.
Barbara Ferrer?
Yes.
Astrid Hager?
Yes.
Abigail Marquez?
Yes.
Summer McBride?
Yes.
Marcella Ramirez?
Yes.
Kara Sagala?
Yes.
And Holly Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Sorry, commissioners, if I confused matters. I said what we needed to do, and then I rolled right on like we weren't -- So forgive me. I'm rusty. The rust is off now. Agenda item number 10, which is another action item. It's our mid-year budget update. We're going to share the fiscal year 2324 mid-year revised budget memo as information to receive and file, and the fiscal year 2324 budget calendar. So this is a written-only item, but staff will be providing some brief, high-level comments before we take action. Hello.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you, Supervisor Mitchell. Welcome to the board meeting today. I, along with my colleagues, are going to cover actually two agenda items, what Supervisor Mitchell talked about, as well as the next agenda item, which is our Building and Capital Improvement Update. So the first one, I'm here joined with my colleagues, Roel Ortega, Director of Finance, and Daisy Lopez, Manager of Financial Planning Analysis. They'll cover the mid-year adjustment to our current fiscal year. So if you recall from the last board meeting, this was part of the streamline process by the board last November, where we provided a memo for the mid-year adjustments. So my colleagues here will provide a voiceover for this, so I will turn it over to them.
Thank you, JR. Good afternoon, commissioners, staff, and guests. So in this item, we are sharing an update to our fiscal year 2324 budget through a mid-year memo as a document to receive and file. To provide new board members with some context, the mid-year budget adjustment process is an opportunity for the organization to adjust and align the current year budget to revise actual anticipated costs for the year. So this year's mid-year revised budget reflects an upward adjustment of $2 million, or approximately 2% in anticipated expenditures from $99.1 million to $101.1 million. The adjustment is the result of the anticipated received $2 million in funding from the Los Angeles County Office of Education and corresponding costs in support of the Dual Language Learner Communications Campaign, whose intent is to widely disseminate key messages about the benefits of bilingualism, and this is related to the item that we just heard from John Wagner. In addition to the $2 million net adjustment, there were a handful of other cost-neutral adjustments in the budget to redirect funds from one area of projected lower-than-anticipated spending to another area of greater need. More information is included in the memo and supplemental attachments for item 10A. Historically, we have presented mid-year changes to the budget in greater detail through information and action, touchpoints with the board. However, in November 2023, the board approved a streamlined, lighter-touch approach to our mid-year adjustments, given that the mid-year adjustments over the past four years have yielded a less than 3% net change to the total budget, but have still demanded substantial board and staff engagement. That being said, we are submitting item 10A, revisions to the fiscal year 2324 budget, as an item for the board to receive and file. And just to note, these revisions have been presented and reviewed in greater detail with our executive director. And just very quickly, I would like to call out that included in today's materials is a budget calendar, which summarizes the various key board and internal engagements throughout the fiscal year 2425 budget development process, which will culminate in June when the 2425 budget is presented to the board for approval. Back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Now, I heard you say "receive and file." So are we taking a vote on this item, or we're just going to receive and file it?
Confirming that we're just going to receive and file. No action is required on this particular item.
Perfect. And since no action is required, do we still need public comment?
Yes, we do.
All right, let's have public comment. If there are no comments or questions from commissioners, let's go on to public comment on agenda item 10.
Confirming there are no public comments on agenda item 10.
Thank you. We'll hear from JR, who will give us the up Thank you. We'll hear from J.R., who will give us the update for phase two in agenda item number eleven, Building and Capital Improvement Project Update.
Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you, Raul and Daisy.
Hey, Commissioners. Next, I will cover the building and capital project, what we refer to as CIP. Going to be referring to CIP, which stands for capital project for this. It is work that we're pursuing this year. Before I talk about the building, one thing I do want to showcase here is our sustainability framework. And for the new Commissioners here, as well as a refresher for the Commissioners that's been here, the sustainability framework was put together last November, excuse me, last September for the board. And it was meant to first define what sustainability, which we defined as ensuring first five L.A. can achieve long-lasting impact and stability toward our mission. And also cover these two areas and walk through the framework today. So I'll actually start to the right, where it talks about the alternative revenue strategies here. So these are strategies that will help with our sustainability efforts. Some are a little bit more self-explanatory than others. Others, I'll explain or add more color. Policy advocacy, this advocating where we can attain more funding through work through our advocacy, through our policies. This area called business model, this is an area perhaps we could look into in terms of being a fiscal intermediary, where we can cover our administrative costs, should we be in the position of being a fiscal intermediary. And then there's the other piece here about being collective impact as a strategy, where we're partnering with other organizations to pool funding. Carla mentioned earlier about the presentations that were later. Health home visiting is going to be an example of this collective impact. So that is one side of the framework. On the left side, it's all about maximizing first five L.A. assets. As Carla mentioned in here, one of our assets is our building here. So that's where, under the operations side, it talks about our building, as well as other assets such as our staff capabilities, our technology, and just being cost-efficient. To the right is this investment strategy, still in a conceptual phase at this point. But it talks about how we can develop an approach for return on investment against our programmatic investments for this. So the key takeaway with this particular slide is it is maximizing our assets in terms of our building. So it's in line with the sustainability framework. Give you a little bit of history about our building. Back in 2017, there was a capital improvement project fund that was set up. It was in the neighborhood of $7 million. In 2018, it was actually part of our long-term plan for this. And subsequently, in 2020, the Executive Committee endorsed a phased approach, where we have a CIP Phase One and a CIP Phase Two for this. And more recently, the board has emphasized through a variety of interactions with, or how important to use our space for the community for that. Okay? CIP Phase One, just to give you a highlight about what that covered here. As you can read there, a lot of it was around building entry pieces in there. And that kind of tied into the pandemic that happened back in 2020 for that. But as you can see, there are larger infrastructures of HVAC, roofing, solar panels, IT network upgrades. Well, the whole point of this is for long-term sustainability for this. The key thing to maybe keep it simple in terms of what Phase One covered, staff usually refers this as behind-the-walls type of improvements or on-the-roof. But as you can see, these were more larger infrastructure pieces and equipment. That was part of Phase One, which was completed in 2022. Part of, the initial part of CIP Phase Two, CIP Phase Two was more, as I mentioned earlier, CIP Phase One was behind the walls or on the roof. CIP Phase Two will focus more of the interior, as well as portions of the exterior for this. So back in July 2023 last year, we did complete an initial part of the CIP Phase Two. We called it a building refresh. That coincided with our staff returning to the office full-time for this under a new hybrid work policy. So you can see for some of the Commissioners who've been here for a while, some improvements around mainly the first-floor painting, as well as some cube reconfigurations throughout the building and patio furniture for this. So what's remaining for CIP Phase Two? As you can see, these are high-level requirements for the remaining funds that we have, which is 2.2 out of that approximately 7 million in there. The high-level requirements for this is around staff productivity, as I mentioned, also community space. And again, want to reemphasize the building upgrades for long-term sustainability with the investments, again, in our HVAC, solar panels, and everything that you saw in previous slide. So where do we go from here? Internal staff did get together to determine what will be these requirements at a more detailed level, given these high-level requirements, and obtained estimates for this work. So the whole point of that is essentially trying to see what we can do with the funds that we have for this. So although scope phase for Phase Two is still under development, these are areas that we think will be part of that scope, which includes renovation of the former tenant space for community use. What I meant tenant space, we did have a childcare tenant on the first floor for those. Playground removal, where we can perhaps convert that to a patio for our staff, as well as a tenant for those. And kitchen upgrades and painting throughout, and as well as furniture for those. So these are all pieces based on the high-level requirements that we think will be part of this Phase Two. Again, reemphasizing the Phase Two is our internal space, as well as portions of the first floor. So how are we going to approach this Phase Two? As staff has getting estimates and put together some more detailed requirements around this, a lot of the scope varies in complexity. All right, so what we're noticing, that the more complex works will require some level of procuring contractors, leveraging expertise for completing designs, getting permits, and quantitatively managing to work for that. So we know that's going to be a part where there's a good heavy lift for that, where we're going to depend on expertise from outside contractors for that. On the other side, very similar to our building refresh that you saw on a previous slide, there is less complex work, where we would still procure and select contracts, but perhaps manage it with our own internal staff. For example, the painting and perhaps purchasing furniture for that. So we did want to try to approach this work with these two areas going simultaneously. So work with contractors, so we can do some of the stuff and manage some of the stuff ourselves. And then another side, where we're leveraging outside expertise, helping us with design, as you can imagine, more time for that to help us put forth the more complex work around our CIP Phase Two for that. So this is our latest thinking for the work that we would want to approach for this year. Again, it is in line with our sustainability framework, because our building is our asset, as well as our staff capabilities are assets, and this will help complement their productivity for that. So in terms of next steps, as I mentioned, we do want to get down deeper with the finalized scope for the Phase Two. Complete the procurements for the contractors and buy periodic or as we get deeper into this work here. So I will take questions if there are.
Thank you very much. Any questions from Commissioners? I have a quick question. Do we have any general idea of the value of this amazing asset?
Yes, Commissioner, I think these numbers are dated, around a couple of years old. But I believe it was in the neighborhood of this building being worth, that is, about $20 million plus.
Okay. Just curious, because first five owns it outright.
Hmm, that's correct.
Fabulous. And are there other county, do we know, first five commissions that own their building? There are. Okay. Excellent. I was just curious. Any other questions from Commissioners? We're not taking action. Do we need to open up for public comment?
Yes, we do need to take public comments, and confirming there aren't any.
Beautiful. No public comment. Thank you very much for the update. We're a little ahead of our agenda, but we're still going to take our break as referenced in the agenda. Ten minutes to break. So we'll be back at 2:25. Thank you, Commissioner Ramirez. Does she have to leave the room as a part of the recusal? Okay, thank you. We'll give you a moment to leave the room and I'll come get you. Thank you. All right, staff, we're ready to.
Great.
Do your presentations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to connect a couple of dots across some presentations. So we are about to enter item 13, which is to authorize First 5 LA to receive funds from LACO. For context, I want to just connect to the presentation we just heard from JR and the finance team around sustainability framework. And this is an example where First 5 LA is actually receiving resources, receiving funds from a county partner that is allowing us to continue our work. Similar to the item, item nine on the agenda, this item allows to bring in those resources into First 5 LA. In order for us to do that, we need a board resolution. First 5 LA's policy is that we need board approval to receive funding from an outside entity. These resources will reimburse First 5 LA partial funding for our report on the status of early care and education, and specifically the workforce here in Los Angeles County. As some commissioners may recall, we did a presentation last year. We were joined by University of California Berkeley, the Center for the Study of Childcare Employment. We've partnered with them to fund this study. And because of these resources and those of First 5 LA, we are able to dig into and get much greater detail on the status of childcare employment here in Los Angeles. Included in the board materials is Resolution 2014/01, which will come back to you for action at the March board meeting. So this is just an information item. The resolution will come back in March and you will consider it at that time. Finally, I'll also highlight the next item on the agenda. Item 13 will also touch on our sustainability work in the area of home visitation. So just connecting dots across a couple of the items on the agenda. And I'll turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Appreciate that. Any questions on Agenda Item 13? Dr. Ferrer.
Yes, John, that was so helpful. I'm just wondering, how is that being coordinated with the early care and education folks?
So actually, is Appellian or Jamie? Our expert. I want to make sure you get the right answer from our expert.
No, because I know they're doing a lot of work on workforce. So I just want to make sure that we're being very synergistic and complimentary on this work.
Yeah, we see this definitely as data that we want to share far and wide. We've actually shared it with the Office for the Advancements of Early Care and Education to be an input for the infant toddler blueprint especially, and some of their work around universal pre-K. So they have that as sort of an input material. We were hoping earlier this year to get together with LACO and OACEE to figure out how else we want to share this. I think there might be some events coming up later in the year where it can be part of the discussion. So it's something that we're trying to be really intentional about and making sure that sort of any strategies that we have are going to be data-driven. We were also able to have Anna Powell from the Center for the Study of Childcare Employment present at the local planning committee so that we have that data as well at all the tables we can.
Yeah, that sounds great. I just know that the office has other data. So I mean, I guess what I'm encouraging us is to get a really full picture with the data you have and the data that others have been collecting. And they have, you know, two advisory groups that are made up of providers and families. So I just want to make sure that this data is going to be powerful and the work's going to be really important. This is like an area where I think everybody needs to be digging in more and really understanding what the workforce needs are. So I commend you guys for doing it. I just want to make sure that it's complementing other efforts that are out there around the workforce.
Yeah, and if there are other places that you see it can be useful, we'd love to hear that from commissioners.
That sounds great. Thank you. Any other questions from commission members? Seeing none, let's open it up for public comment.
Confirming there are no public comments on this slide.
Thank you. This was for informational purposes. Moving on to the, John referenced the Agenda Item 14, our Home Visiting Sustainability and Strategic Reduction Approaches.
Thank you. So good afternoon, commissioners, staff and guests. I'm happy to present an update today on our Home Visiting Sustainability and Strategic Reduction Approaches. As soon as the clicker works. So while they figure that out, today's presentation goals are to provide an overview of home visiting in LA County, particularly First 5 LA's role and investment, followed with an overview of the planning regarding sustainability and strategic reduction processes, given declining revenue and the long-term financial plan. So we will have time at the end for questions and discussion. So our goals are there. So before, first I would like to ground us in the vision and current scope of home visiting in LA County. So there has been extensive effort across partners in the last eight years to strengthen and build the home visiting system in LA County. The vision on this slide was developed in partnership with county departments and other key partners in 2018. In the Department of Public Health, DPH has taken a lead role in countywide home visiting efforts. DPH helps to administer multiple local, state, and federal home visiting funds and oversee system-wide collaboration efforts. First 5 LA has worked closely, in close partnership with DPH and other county partners, starting with a series of board motions in 2016 and through DPH's expansion of home visiting services that started in 2018 into the present. So this partnership extends from implementation to the leadership levels. So at the implementation level, DPH, First 5 LA, and our oversight entity staff meet regularly to coordinate the nuts and bolts of implementation across the network of program models and funding streams. And at the leadership level, there's an established structure called the Collaborative Leadership Council and the Home Visiting Consortium, which together coordinate and leverage efforts to elevate critical issues across system partners, including data, to inform planning efforts. So this slide gives an overview of the home visiting landscape in LA County for this current fiscal year. As you can see, it's a countywide investment of $96 million. It spans six program models, nine funding sources, five of which are administered by DPH. First 5 LA used to be the largest funder, but due to successful advocacy efforts and increased state funding for home visiting, that honor now goes to DPH. So as you can see, DPH manages the largest portion of funding and services at 49% of the total. And in 2018, First 5 LA was funding more than half of all the services. This was reduced to 39% in fiscal year '21-'22 and is now at 33%. So despite this, First 5 LA's home visiting investment remains our largest direct service, direct service investment, and it represents 33% of the overall agency budget and 56% of the programmatic budget. So given that view of the landscape, I'd like to dive into First 5 LA's home visiting investment. So first, why focus on home visiting? It is a successful and proven prevention strategy with positive results across multiple domains: infant and child development, maternal health, mental health, school readiness, prevention of child abuse and neglect, to name a few. Home visiting services and dosage may look different across program models, but they all offer voluntary prenatal and/or postpartum support with a trained designated professional, typically either a nurse, a social worker, or an early childhood specialist that provides guidance through their early stages of raising a family. Home visiting also serves as an important connection to families in a unique setting, the family's home. This is a place where other professionals cannot go and helps the development of a trusting relationship that helps home visitors really identify needs and provide navigation support to needed services and resources in ways that other professionals cannot. So home visiting continues to serve as an important investment to First 5 LA and supports the goals of the 2024-2029 strategic plan listed on the slide. You can see how home visiting plays a role in each of those goals, from connecting families to necessary services such as basic needs, to supporting nurturing relationships and a solid foundation to wellbeing and learning. In its early years, First 5 LA invested in various home visiting grants, but really began a network approach in 2009. So this slide indicates the expansion of this network from one Welcome Baby pilot site in 2009 to three program models, starting with the universal program with Welcome Baby. Welcome Baby is currently available to all families in the participating hospitals and includes a hospital-based risk assessment to identify family needs and triage families to the right program for their level of needs, whether that is Welcome Baby as a light touch program or the more intensive Healthy Families America or Parents as Teachers. Infrastructure support has also been a key role for First 5 LA and is critical for a high-quality system. So First 5 LA funds an oversight entity led by Los Angeles Best Babies Network, which provides training, technical assistance, and database support, as well as funding for the Stronger Families database. Both of these support providers across program models and funding streams in the county. And additionally, First 5 LA funds the Home Visiting Consortium, which represents over 60 organizations that support, deliver, or advocate for high-quality home visiting services. And I will say this is my favorite slide because that is my daughter. At six months, she is adorable. She is now a teenager and almost as old as the investment. I still use her picture. So I'm going to be highlighting just a few achievements of the First 5 LA home visiting services. So this represents just a snapshot of some of those accomplishments. So in this last fiscal year, we enrolled over 15,000 families in Welcome Baby. This represents about 15% of all county births and over 800 for HFA and PAT. There were also over 15,000 successful referrals made. And as you can see, the top needs identified were charitable services, lactation support, parent support groups, and food needs. And all of this demonstrates that basic needs remain a family priority. In this snapshot, you can see achievements in two different domains. The first is in developmental screening. So California has a rate of 28% for children receiving at least one developmental screening, while our HFA and PAT programs achieved 85% and Welcome Baby 99%. Another domain is in safe sleeping in terms of education provided and the practices of the families. The county rate for the baby sleeping on their back is 82%, compared to 93% for HFA and PAT and 98% for Welcome Baby. And finally, here are two measures known as HEATIS measures. These are important and used as benchmark data by managed care plans, and they must meet these benchmark data points. Information from our home visiting programs consistently show that our programs outperform both Medi-Cal and commercial health insurance plan rates in the receipt of well-child visits and maternal postpartum care. So as I mentioned, there's been a number of Board of Supervisor motions. And these motions directed the Department of Public Health, Health Services, Mental Health, DCFS, and First 5 LA to bring a more focused effort to creating a coordinated and broadened approach to home visiting. And it really kicked off momentum for collaboration and partnership work at a systems level that continues to the present. The first board motion in 2016 led to the vision that I shared in the slide previously, as well as an action plan in 2018. And that action plan has been a blueprint, identifying needs and collaboration efforts between key entities in the county with a focus on building out an infrastructure to implement a system-wide approach. An additional board motions in 2019 and 2021 have affirmed and continued this momentum of working in partnership. These efforts led to the establishment of a Collaborative Leadership Council, established in December of 2019 chaired by DPH with its purpose listed on the slide, and the Collaborative Leadership Council works in close collaboration with the Home Visiting Consortium. So this brings us to our key question now that you have the context of home visiting in LA County. Given the scale of the investment and declining revenue, how will it align to the long-term financial plan? Currently, First 5 LA's home visiting investment for direct services, so for the three program models of Welcome Baby, HFA, and PAT, has a budget of about $32.5 million for this fiscal year. The status quo approach with the same investment level or the same scale for home visiting is not sustainable under declining revenue. So as a reminder back to JR's presentation, the First 5 LA Sustainability Framework includes maximizing current investments with a return on investment approach integrated with either exit strategies or leveraging of external funding streams as well as policy efforts. So that brings me to our next section on sustainability and strategic reductions. And these approaches and considerations will support the alignment of this home visiting investment to the long-term financial plan. So First 5 LA has engaged in extensive exploration of sustainability strategies to offset and/or reduce First 5 LA funds in home visiting, while working in partnership with county partners and others to maintain the infrastructure and advocate for home visiting services and diversified funding streams countywide. So as part of these efforts in 2021, we leveraged funding from the Heising Simons Foundation So as part of these efforts in 2021, we leveraged funding from the Heising Simons Foundation to work with a national consultant, Kay Johnson, to undertake a fiscal mapping project to identify local, national, and federal sustainability strategies. We have been working with those recommendations while maintaining services and infrastructure, while these policy and sustainability opportunities come to fruition. I will highlight two areas of work. The first is the Family First Prevention Services Act, or FFPSA, which aims to enhance support for families and keep children out of foster care. Both HFA and PAT are eligible models for FFPSA reimbursement. And with DCFS as the lead, First 5 L.A. has been deeply involved with county partners in piloting referral pathways and reimbursement processes, as well as piloting strategies such as motivational interviewing for Welcome Baby. We have also continued our engagement with managed care plans, particularly given the many changes happening in how Medi-Cal services will be provided. We continue our partnership and contract with one managed care plan and our engagement with other plans. As you know, there are multiple plans in L.A. However, we have not been able to achieve a contract with other plans. We know plans are managing multiple priorities, given the many changes under Medi-Cal provision, and this has made it difficult to progress as far as we would have liked. We have launched a community health worker pilot, leveraging First 5 California's home visiting grant funds to test how to draw down funds from the new community health worker benefit using the Welcome Baby program. However, while we have continued all this exploration and piloting of sustainability strategies and acknowledgement of declining revenue, we have also undertaken key steps to begin to align the home visiting investment to the long-term financial plan. So this slide identifies an overview of the recent strategies to manage the home visiting investment. This has included the sunsetting of five select home visitings, what we call our HFA and PAT grantees, in '22-'23. This was done in it to advance the alignment to the long-term financial plan, and specifically due to the low number of home visitors at these sites and high administrative costs. And the efforts included close coordination with DPH and our oversight entity to transition families that were enrolled, as well as train staff to other program sites. In the fiscal year '23-'24, we implemented Welcome Baby rightsizing of the staffing structure. So births in L.A. County have continued to decrease from 130,000 in 2011 to less than 98,000 in 2020. So this reduction aligned the Welcome Baby staffing structure to the current birth rate in those participating hospitals. And also, Centinela Hospital did close its own labor and delivery unit this year, which closed the Welcome Baby program there, reducing the number of participating hospitals to 12. We did shift some of that staff and families to other local hospitals. We have also had revenue coming in to offset home visiting expenditures. So we have had a contract, as I mentioned, with Promise Health since 2021, and we do receive support from the Department of Mental Health through the prevention and early intervention funds and the cost of $13 million across three years, starting in 2023. So in terms of short-term planning, the next few months, staff is analyzing options for the upcoming '24-'25 programmatic budget to continue to identify and implement strategic reductions. As an example of one strategy already shared with grantees, we will be implementing an individualized capped contract amount for each grantee. This means staff are building up current budget amounts to calculate a capped amount that grantees can then budget up to for the following year. Other strategies being assessed include additional Welcome Baby rightsizing of the staffing structure, freezing vacant positions, and ongoing assessment of site performance. Despite these changes, we do not foresee any significant reductions to home visiting services in L.A. County for the upcoming fiscal year. And final assessments of all these potential strategies will inform the development of the '24-'25 home visiting programmatic budget and any anticipated reductions. In the long term, staff is going to be working this year to develop a plan to align the scale of the home visiting investment to the long-term financial plan, taking into account potential sustainability strategies that may offset home visiting funds. So there are multiple efforts across the county to maximize funding opportunities and the system infrastructure needed to effectively manage diversified funding streams. For example, DPH secured funding from the Hilton Foundation to build a centralized billing system, which is critical to claim and bill accurately when there are diversified funding streams. First 5 L.A. has also leveraged the First 5 California Home Visiting Grant to partner with DPH to build a data lake, which will combine aggregate data from across four program models and three databases and diverse funding streams into one database, and this will be transitioned to DPH's oversight upon completion and will allow for dashboards to better inform countywide prevention and planning efforts. As part of the new strategic plan, staff have also identified that the First 5 L.A. investment into direct services will be capped as a percentage of the PROCTON revenue. This will help guide internal thinking and alignment to the long-term financial plan, and in the long term, any additional home visiting expenditures beyond this cap will have to be offset by external funds. So as staff explore options to achieve alignment, we're taking into account multiple considerations, some of which are listed on the slide. So what are the available sustainability opportunities for each program model? When will they come to fruition? How are other partners, including the county or managed care plans, involved in those sustainability opportunities? How is the infrastructure to support quality service being maintained in coordination with others? What is the geographic impact and availability of services countywide if there are changes? And how are sites performing? So these are all key questions that will inform long-term planning in partnership with DPH and others. So finally, I wanted to call out a few considerations regarding sustainability strategies. The success of some of these strategies are still pending decisions by external entities, including the state. So as an example, we have yet to hear details on some of the reimbursement rates. This information will impact all of L.A. County home visiting services, including First 5 L.A. So to call out some different examples, we know that the Mental Health Services Act is on the ballot, and if passed, will influence how the Department of Mental Health distributes funding. If this act goes into effect in '25-'26, it will impact funding being used by First 5 L.A. to offset home visiting, and so additional alternatives are being explored. We're still exploring. It may affect, yes, some of the offset that First 5 L.A. is using some of those funds to offset our own expenditures. There are also changes happening in the provision of Medi-Cal services. So First 5 L.A. continues to explore that community health worker benefit, including that pilot effort I mentioned. However, the many changes in the provision of Medi-Cal services has managed care plans working with multiple priorities, which has affected the ability to advance our engagement with plans. We continue that engagement and continue to explore other opportunities, given those changes, including Cal AIM. And finally, we are still pending information from the state for FFPSA and motivational interviewing rates. We do know FFPSA will reimburse up to 50% match. That would give us a maximum level at which First 5 L.A. could be reimbursed. However, without the exact reimbursement rate, it's not yet possible to estimate the external funding or offsets. We're waiting for that type of information. So the answers to these questions will really inform the level of offset and leveraging that can be achieved countywide and for First 5 L.A. So with that, you can see there are many efforts underway, both in the short and the long term, to plan around possible sustainability opportunities and to align the First 5 L.A. home visiting investment to our long-term financial plan. So at this time, I wanted to open up to questions and discussion. You have two questions here, what you may want to know about the strategic reduction considerations and the process to align to that long-term financial plan, or any questions regarding potential sustainability efforts.
I appreciate that. We'll start with Commissioner Hager and go over to Commissioner McCroskey.
Thank you very much. That was a very interesting overview of what we're doing with home visitation. As you all know, and maybe Jacqueline's equally interested in this, I would like to have some insight and understanding of comparing the impact of home visitation on families that receive the service and those that do not, in terms of looking at outcomes, in terms of not just the how many are screened, but how many actually access services, and how many, and what's a comparison, in terms of school readiness and developmental services that they're getting, so that we're actually looking at who gets involved with DCFS and who did not get involved with them. Are they getting the services that they need? If they're getting screened and they screen in, are they getting access to the services that they need? And that would be, I mean, I'm glad we're screening them, but I also want to know that it has impact, and maybe that would guide some of our funding in the direction of those that actually use services, that are good services. Also, is there a attempt in looking at those who provide home visitation, at looking at the protocols, that they have similar protocols and similar guidelines in terms of what they're actually doing in the homes and home visitation, so that we know, we have an idea of what works and what doesn't work, and maybe, you know, making it a general impact in terms of what's happening? And then finally, since we were actually talking about this over break, over lunch, I obviously feel very, very strongly that if we're going into homes, that every single kid should be screened for FASD, especially if we're looking at the zero-to-two-year-olds, because then we can actually focus, begin to acknowledge that it is a disaster for kids that have been exposed to that across the board, and that we are actually looking at creating resources to hope those families stay well and keep the kids out of the juvenile justice system. So that sort of impact of what we're doing, I think, is critical, and I'd love to see that data. I think it's hard to come by, because oftentimes, people don't want to share their data, but it would be, it's one thing to say they're visiting, and there's another thing to say we're visiting and causing, and bringing about change. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hager. Those multi-layered comments. So I will just say, they are, HFA and PAT are evidence-based models, so they've been rigorously tested to show that they do have positive outcomes. We can definitely pull data in terms of linkages to services, because we're tracking referrals, and we do ask families, "Did you get service?" And part of that follow-up is to go back at the next visit and ask them, "Do you need help? Do you want me to call with you? What is the barrier?" Continuing to do that follow-ups, I think that really lends to the high success, but we can definitely pull data on that. Models all have protocols in terms of material covered, but also to be responsive to family needs. So they do have curriculums that are followed and provide kind of guidance to what information and at what time points are provided, given to where the child is developmentally. So we can definitely look at those things and look at what their bandwidth is for screenings as they conduct a lot of work in that area as well.
One additional question, I'm sorry, because I personally believe that home visitation also needs to be very culturally appropriate and appropriate to the community in terms of what resources they have access to, and that navigating, if we're navigating, that we've navigated that family into the resource they need in order to be successful. And so that's another thing that would be nice to know. I'm glad we're doing home visiting, but I'd like to do, I'd like to know more about outcomes.
So I'm struck by the timing of these various changes that are going on, because there's obviously a good deal of urgency for us around, you know, considerations of strategic reductions, as you very nicely called it in your presentation. And as somebody who's very involved in the FFPSA side of things, and I know probably just enough to be dangerous on the other two that we're sort of working with here, I know they all have different timeframes, right? So for FFPSA, in the case of the Families First Prevention Services Act, there's certain identified programs that we can draw down the 50% reimbursement for. And California's plan, I think, has eight specific programs. Three are home visiting. So it's a really important strategy in terms of our ability to use these federal funds. And you sort of, you said 2026, we might know something. Honestly, I don't think we'll know something by 2026, because it depends on the state constructing an entirely new child welfare data system. The last time we did that, it took 15 years. So it's very challenging. But nonetheless, there are some funds flowing now, and the potential for home visiting is quite strong. And I think, I mean, obviously, Commissioner Byrd can talk more about the MHSA, et cetera, et cetera. I just wonder if this kind of detail, and we could certainly include the data in that. Commissioner Byrd is the new chair of the Program Committee, and Commissioner Hager is the new vice chair, and maybe that's something we could take to Program Committee and understand kind of in more depth. But what do each of these funding streams really offer? And would they be supporting only certain pieces of the puzzle, which pieces, what gaps might we see in the future if we, you know, aren't able to draw the funding streams together, et cetera? I'm sure you have ideas about that.
You've hit the nail on the head. I think it's a balancing act and a tension point between when these opportunities will come to fruition, when they will go live, versus kind of the declining revenue, and how do you balance? I think at this point, this is why we've been doing strategic reductions, assessed based on birth rate, based on vacant positions, really trying to maintain infrastructure as we wait to learn more, and that is a balancing act. Not perfect, but.
Hi. Thank you so much for this presentation. It's really exciting and really helps to kind of provide a kind of overview of all of the moving parts and pieces. And then, you know, coming from the community college world, and just in general with higher ed, I'm really thinking a lot about, I know you mentioned curriculum, the training, but also as a sustainability question, potentially, how are we, or how is First 5 L.A. going to be partnering with community colleges, CSUs? Because this is a big space for added coursework and certificates at our level, and there's lots and lots of talk constantly about, you know, completion and getting students to enroll. And as you all know, with the changes in the dynamics with universal transitional kindergarten, I'm going to bring this up a lot, very passionate about it in some ways, with the changes in the way that our K-12 system is set up, and we're including that more, this is a very important space, I think, for First 5 L.A. to recruit students who are maybe not so sure that they want to go into that transitional kindergarten world, but maybe not so sure they want to go into preschool world, but maybe sure they really want to work with children and families. And so I really want to highlight that and make sure that that's something that's brought up a lot, and I'm happy to talk with you more about, and having someone from First 5 L.A. come to one of our advisory board meetings to talk about this importance and how this might have a space in our programming.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. It was a great presentation, and, you know, I want to say from the DPH side, I mean, we've appreciated so much the support, both the critical thinking and wise counsel support from First 5, as well as the financial investments. You know, I think the world of home visiting is vast. We are both at DPH and at First 5, using only evidence-based programs, but even among evidence-based programs, there's huge differences. And I think the promise of home visiting is real. I mean, there have been fairly rigorous studies of the programs we're using about their effectiveness. You know, I would say what we actually need to think a little bit differently, which is that a lot of these programs are very regimented, and I love the question about, you know, sort of cultural appropriateness. I mean, we have a huge unhoused program, so even just the nomenclature that we use around home visiting doesn't make sense for many of the families that really need our support the most. And I want to say, we do a lot of home visiting for families who are, in fact, unhoused. But again, we are sort of confined by programs that were developed for a different time, frankly. I'm going to pick a lot on the Nurse Family Partnership. Everyone knows my feelings about that program. I think for some clients, a very small group of clients, it works really well. It's very expensive. It's very protocol-heavy. It's got some, you know, it's based on some evidence, I think, is outdated. And I think we can do better investing our money in programs that offer more flexibility and are more adaptable, and make better use of sort of some of the lessons we're learning about peer-to-peer work, you know, really expanding the teams, who's on the teams, what kind of support they give folks. I think home visiting in and of itself, you know, changed the name, but allowing a team of folks to work with families for long periods of time is a great idea. It's, you know, it's, for the most part, it's a voluntary program, and for the most part, when you talk to families, they love having this extra support. But the extra support needs to look different, depending on everybody's But the extra support needs to look different depending on everybody's needs. Some people need a lot of extra support through home visiting on just securing basic essentials that allow them to be effective parents and caregivers of children, while other people are looking, they have a child with special needs and are looking for connections to the world of accessing services and support for a child with special needs. You know, in fact, I mean, I think the bottom line is home visiting is one tool to provide families with much-needed support, but I would urge us to be very creative about both the nomenclature we're using so that we can offer, we can use this, you know, as sort of, there's less resources, as the opportunity to not stay wedded to what I'm going to call these evidence-based models and instead to be able to be innovative and creative. The second thing I wanted to say is there is a lot of infrastructure investment that has been made in getting into, for DPH, in getting into contracts with managed care to pursue in particular reimbursement for members of different health plans for home visiting. And we should not repeat that. Like, we should, we should figure out how to use those contracts to be more expansive because I, I will say it's taken us almost a year to get into contracts with the larger managed care plans here that served our, that serve our Medi-Cal population. But we're here to be supportive of that and, but I want to acknowledge how much infrastructure it takes. And I also want to acknowledge that there's room for a lot of advocacy around the relationships between CalAim and the populations we care about. It's not, it can't, a fee for service or a, a set rate for a set of services that are very carefully defined does not always advance population health. So I think there's an opportunity here for some advocacy with managed care to be more population-focused and be willing to pay more like grants for programs than bill us, I mean, you literally have to set up a billing system to do CalAim work. And, you know, for many of our smaller programs, this is not going to work. And, and it's going to be cost prohibitive. So, so I think there's room here for a lot of creativity, but, you know, we're, we'd love to work with others on this. And again, I want to applaud First 5 for their leadership in both spaces, programming and advocacy.
We welcome the partnership and sharing.
Thank you very much. It was very informative, but just piggybacking on everyone else, I think there's a real need to look at a model that's culturally appropriate in your curriculum and then disseminate that so that, as you said, for the educators that are coming through the system, we can, they can know a little bit more about it and they can begin to see, make more models that are appropriate. The other thing, which was well-taken, is that we really need to find out more about what's working with the unhoused families and how, not just meeting them, but maybe beginning to focus on that population and also providing rich data, which we will get in terms of what else we can do. That's a very at-risk population and it's wonderful that we're working with them, but I think the name probably needs to reflect something different. Not that it's a bad name, but it's really, the unhoused don't sound like they fit in that population, but also really to look at the strong models that you're taking away, that is a takeaway from the curriculum that you're offering. It's very exciting and so I look forward to a follow-up on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I appreciate the comments that came before me because you helped me formulate my thoughts in a clearer way. Hopefully, thank you for this presentation. One of the, a couple of the data points that come to mind on this presentation were from a presentation last year where we heard about the enrollment or utilization of these programs by different populations. And I remember Latino families utilize a lot of the programs, were, were not overrepresented, but they, they use them and they access a lot of the programs. Black families, however, utilize them proportionate to their representation in the community, but not proportionate to the birth disparity rates. So you would expect more black families to be enrolled in these home visitation programs, which leads me to think about exactly what Dr. Ferrer was talking about and, and also the comment about culturally responsive, because inviting someone into your home can be a very sensitive space, especially when you're even, especially if you start to talk about screening, you're going to give a lot of pause to families, particularly black families, who are, who consider that space sacred and also have this, you know, general mistrust of some systems. The one thing that also made me think a little bit differently about the program is we have seen an increase in funding for doula services and there are postpartum doulas that do similar work as the workers that do home visitation. And maybe there's an opportunity there for expanding doula services and the funding that's coming from Medi-Cal for doula services as well as looking at postpartum doulas as a way to supplement programs where, you know, there aren't opportunities for or where families don't feel as comfortable with the home visitation, but they can have a postpartum doula for six months. I also am wondering if there was anything in the Momni Bus Act specifically for black families that could help fund these services and find ways to change the way it's presented so that the services are similar to the home visitation, but in a more culturally responsive way.
So I will say definitely doula's work is completely complementary to home visiting work and they support some of the same outcomes. You have a great memory because it is true. We do have a higher rate of Latino families enrolling in home visiting versus African-American. And this is something that providers in the field have identified, you know, and worked on as well as part of the Home Visiting Consortium. They created and called for a different work group for African-American families and home visiting providers and did work around, how do you hire more staff representative of the communities? And they came up with a guide. So there's a lot of work happening at the ground level to look at some of these challenges and address. And I think we can definitely look into some of that information and see how can we continue to partner, leverage and create a system. Home visiting is just one approach, one tool of many within a successful early childhood system. And so I think this is how we need to blend it and braid it together to see how we can connect families to the services that they need and they're open to.
Thank you.
I think this is a really amazing opportunity for First 5. I think that we have two things going on and we have home visitation going on. At the same time, in my field of child abuse, for those of you who don't know what I do for a living, the idea of, of not reporting, but supporting. And so we're all of a sudden at a point, and I'm listening, you know, Summer, I think I'm obviously looking at navigation, like how do we connect families with things? My position on supporting, not reporting, is that we should be reporting more so that we can support. And if we don't know the families that are in need, we can't support them. So we need eyes in the community to identify the families that we can navigate to resources and provide the resources so that children don't enter into the neglect arena and then are reported and perhaps removed from their families. I think this is an opportunity for us to look to, to collaborate and cooperate with those efforts that we see home visitation as an opportunity to provide the resources and help families access what they need in order to sustain their, their kids. I think this is, I mean, I am opposed to not having reporting because I don't think we can deliver services to families if we don't know that they're in need. And, and until we build enough community connections back to the centers, we know that the centers that we built decreased foster care and decreased child death. We know that. And that was because we increased the number of kids that we were seeing, right? I think that we would love to see them and leave them. And I think this is where we have an opportunity to be a voice saying, we want to do home visitations and we want to cooperate and collaborate so we can keep the children there by knowing what they need and then linking them to resources like Change Reaction and other things like that, that want to buy the things and provide the family the support that they need when they are economically challenged or, or situationally challenged. So I, I would love to see us do that.
I, I just think as, as Dr. Ferrer talked about, the nomenclature around home visiting, see, when I hear you say report, my whole body tightens up. And so as I listen to you, I think what you're saying is like referral, but just even the, the terminology of reporting, you know, I literally have a physical reaction. So I hear you, we have to know their need and refer them to places to get help. I, I agree.
But we have to make it easy enough.
Oh, I agree.
For those individuals who have been mandated reporters. I hear what you're saying.
To have another option.
I hear that. And, and I don't see that as, as a bad word, as long as we intercept that message so that we're not looking at it as an opportunity to interfere and take the child away. But I think what we have to do is we have to know what families are in need.
I agree. But I think we're not there yet in terms of not seeing that as a bad word. That's going to require culture shift and, and time because we've got so much time under our belt with really the negative perception. I completely get what you're saying conceptually. I get it. I just think we have to figure out how to, how to do that. I do. Commissioner Tilton, and then I'll go back over here to Commissioner Moses and then back over here, Cortez. Got it?
Thank you. Terminology is challenging. Mandatory support is another terminology issue because people in the community who are licensed and trained and required to report now by law are saying, what if I don't? If there's a mandate, what's the consequence if I don't? So now there's a double negative. Reporting is bad, but being mandated to, mandated to support versus encouraged to support or facilitated is, it's all in very, very emotional and passionate responses. So I want to say that, thank you, Diana. You know that I've been the biggest advocate for home visiting on the planet because way back in the last century, we concluded at the national level that the best way to prevent child abuse, if we only were to do one thing, was universal voluntary neonatal home visitation. And the, the studies proved that it did prevent child abuse. And then by the way, it also prevented smoking and repeated pregnancies and substance abuse and all kinds of other things. So love, love home visitation. I think the, and, and I'm just resonating with all the things that Astrid and Summer and Carol and Jaclyn said. I, I love it, that this is so central to us and I'm glad we have invested so heavily in this. And I know that we have an issue with the level of investment. So what I want to emphasize is a kind of along the lines of how we identify where we're most effective and where we're most needed, is this issue of risk because it is challenging. The risk aspect is challenging, not just in terms of the whole voluntary, is this voluntary? If we're just saying you're, you know, a potential risk to your child? Is it a matter of the safety and training of the home visitor in a home that may be at risk? I know that there's major cultural issues and language issues and it's just not a simple thing. But coming in just with data, in the 1,994 child abuse fatalities that we studied over the last 30 years and reviewed one by one, only two had ever been offered a home visitor. So then you, you start listening to the, the more recent cases and you think, what a home visitor could have done here? The woman who had three children under three, a baby, a one-year-old and a two-and-a-half-year-old in a custody battle, she was isolated. She told people she had postpartum depression. She was not a DCFS case. She was not connected to a social network in her community. She didn't have family support. And one day she drowned, all three of those babies. And I was so viscerally affected by the knowledge that one home visitor in that house could have prevented the death of those three kids. And I know you know the case. So, so for that reason, I would like to offer that, given not only our, our experience with what can go wrong if we don't have the intervention, also looking at the whole neonatal issue. There's about 1,000 reports a year of newborns who've been affected by prenatal substance abuse and they're considered at risk. They're not referred to law enforcement. They are referred for services to DCFS. There's really little knowledge of what happens once they're referred because it's not, they haven't broken the law. Now there's a lot of marijuana issues, questions about whether that's even harmful. And yet, to me, it's a logical target, a logical identified target of newborn babies and mothers and dads and families where a home visit, you know, could make a huge difference. Those are kind of the two populations that I think if we, that we should not, that we should expand our attention to, certainly not come back and cut back. And I, I have talked to some of the professionals and in particular the, the hospital people and the pediatricians about the issue of home visiting now with First 5 and our challenge. And there are so many people who are excited to work with us so that our commission and those who are treating families at risk can perhaps come up with some criteria that would help us target those at-risk families. And, and at the same time, assure that there is this acknowledgement of the incredible profound dichotomy between some families and others and the whole issue of acceptance and impact and accountability. And in this huge issue of homeless families, it's just like home visitor to a street corner or a tent or, or somebody's, you know, backyard. So it's complicated, but, but as I said, I think that those two populations, hopefully we can work together to perhaps better serve. Thank you.
You got it. Thank you. And thank you, Commissioners, all for your, your input. Thank you, Diana, for your fantastic presentation. I'm going to go back to something that Commissioner McBride mentioned around culturally affirming and connecting. I think that there's an opportunity to work with like our Black Infant Health Programs to really think about if this is a, that we're looking to outreach to. They do an absolutely fantastic job in ensuring that they are communicating to, I think, pregnant and postnatal, as we were, right, families for their services, right? And so wondering if there's a way in which we can learn within our Welcome Baby Programs and how we're thinking, or home visitation, sorry, how we're thinking about, you know, what can we learn to broaden that work, right? To really connect both in terms of, of the direct service as well as in terms of messaging. And I think that the idea of messaging and ensuring that those who have not otherwise been connected to services that have, that we know could probably benefit from some of these services, I think that this is something that we have in conversation around early childhood education, that we have it around, you know, so many other aspects that is critical in these early years and really thinking maybe outside the box of what we're, what we can do to really support families to all of these array of resources in a way that speaks to why they would want to do something. And I think a big piece for me has really been thinking about, we're not just translating something to a language, right, but that we're really thinking about what is, what are the words that we're using and how are those being perceived by populations of people kind of across the board? So I just wanted to share those thoughts.
Thank you. We're going to go back over here to Commissioner Cortez and then Dr. Ferrer.
Thank you so much again. I was wanting to go back to something that Commissioner McBride brought up, which is the, the differences in the way different communities are going to respond. And I think this really does, that's all very much supported in the research that's out there. And so you're probably already familiar, but just in case, I also thought of this as a potential of, again, in terms of sustainability, but also long-term financial plan of like, again, I know, back to higher ed, partnering possibly with a university or college that might be already invested or interested in this. And I'm thinking particularly of that, that one that's down the way that, that you work at, that I didn't go to. that I didn't go to. USC. And so I'm just thinking about like this is a different spaces where there might be already an invested interest in that research partnering with those, which made me also think about this idea of like a possible, there needs to be like a broader campaign outreach to educate the community so that there is that idea that this is a safe, sorry, not safe. Let me go back to, when I talk to my students about our communities in which we currently live, so many of us are isolated and we don't have those structural supports that you were speaking to. And so this is about how do we help each other? How do we, as a, how does First Five LA and the Welcome Baby Program become part of your, just part of the plan of what happens when you give birth? And these are the people that you can reach out to and they're not scary. And so I was just thinking about like the potential of like a social media campaign, advertisements, you know, on the radio to kind of really hone in on, this is a, these are, we're your people. We speak to you. We advocate for you in culturally sensitive ways and in ways in which that really drive home that message that we want to spread and that, and to help, you know, the first year of life is really hard, but we've got you, right? Or whatever it is, you know? We're part of your, we're part of your structural support system in this really tough time. Need somebody to come and help you watch your baby while you, you know, fix dinner, you know? We got, or whatever, I don't know. I'm just throwing things out there. But you got the idea. But thank you. Thank you again for this.
Thank you. Dr. Ferrer.
Yeah, thanks so much. I do want to support the sentiments that so many have spoken to about sort of a targeted approach. You know, I've been here long enough to have known, you know, that we started with a very ambitious goal of sort of universal home visiting. In a time of declining revenues, I would urge us to step back and perhaps think about targeted. And I would call it sort of in-person visiting as opposed to home visiting. And it's in-person visiting and support. And I love the idea of really acknowledging where we have seen great risk. So I know we, we're working on the prevention, what is it called? The Governance Committee? I don't know what their name is. But, and that has a lot of people at the table also trying to think about, you know, what does a prevention agenda look like? And there is a lot of acknowledgement that families with very small children or pregnant individuals who are struggling with behavioral health issues, substance issues, mental health issues, often pretty disconnected. And often with those connections and support, the trajectory for their children becomes, for themselves and their children becomes very different. And for some of these populations, I mean, you actually, there are ways that we could identify. So it's not like a pie in the sky, like, oh, you know, there are ways to identify. These are voluntary programs. I want to sort of note that, like, they won't, they don't really work if they're not voluntary. But I think when you're providing support to people, that's, you know, starting from what do they need, not what do you want? You know, people are fairly responsive. But I do think we would benefit at First Five. I mean, I've urged our team at DPH as well in the time of declining resources to really figure out where we, where there's a gap. And the gap is on outcomes. And then what would we need to do when we look at those inequities in outcomes? What do we need to do? What things do we think might have a chance? What is the community telling us is going to work? And I love this idea about, you know, going to the folks who have been serving people in the communities forever. There are Black women who have organized themselves for decades now around really preserving their families. And we need to acknowledge that. And that's why I was saying where we've failed is by having these rigorous models, like the Nurse Family Partnership model, that women are saying they don't want, they don't need, and it's not good for their community. And so I think if we put all that together, targeted flexibility, working, you know, the money really needs to flow out to the folks who know how to do this work best. And being able to support, you know, that community infrastructure, I think does lead to supporting families where they would like to get supported.
I can just add, Commissioner Ferrer, I think it's that system of different models that meet different needs for different families is really important and how do they coordinate and work together.
Definitely.
Commissioner McBride.
I'll keep it brief, but I just appreciate everything that's been said, especially about the messaging that goes out, whatever we call it, whatever it begins to look like. One other data point that is seared in my brain is that one in three Black children who were five years old in 2020 were reported to CPS. I remember that because it stuck with me. I have five children. That means that the likelihood of one of them being reported is really great, you know, based on the averages. And when we're talking about in-home visitation, these are the experiences that Black families are having in real time that also lead to them being hesitant to welcome that support, even though they need it. Because I've done postpartum support and we have a NICU support group now. And I do, I am able, but it's through word of mouth. When families are supported and then they hear that it works and they hear that it's safe and they hear that we're not asking about your financial situation or who lives in your household, they're more inclined to access the services. And there are great outcomes. So as we're talking about the messaging and we're looking at the name and just, you know, the language and culture that we're moving towards, I do want us to constantly recall the data points that inform why people respond to some of the programs the way they do.
Commissioner Byrne.
So I think in terms, there's a couple of points. I have like pages of notes. I find this is a super rich conversation. And as a partner in this project, I'm trying to figure out how we help further. So one of the gaps, I think, would be looking at models that have been proven to be effective with the unhoused population, right? We have state block grants that could be leveraged to some models past that evidence-based practice threshold, right? And we have state block grants. Now we have a little bit longer to spend. So if there's practices that are successful, there's an opportunity through FFPSA to like bring those to the table, get them added to our county's plan or at least advocate for it. And then I was thinking, you know, in terms of where people go and how we normalize the messaging and how we expose these resources to the communities, I think there's some organic places or places that are becoming a little bit more organic, like for May's Mental Health Month. The Department of Mental Health is planning take action events in each of the eight service areas. So it'd be great to have somebody from LABV and come and be able to like represent those services for those communities because those communities vary throughout our county. Or our Community Family Resource Center that we have out in the Antelope Valley. Or DPH's Wellness Centers, right? So I think we have places where we can get those, get the information out there, where people are coming, communities are accessing those resources just naturally, without threat. And I think that the more we can market and get the word out there in a non-threatening way to avoid the term "reporting," I think the more chance of accessing the services, we'll see.
I agree. Thank you. Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation. I just wanted to add one place to Dr. Bird's list of natural places. That would be schools. And just having that information at our school sites, our community schools and all the centers.
Or WIC offices. Yep. Childcare Resource Agencies. I think the list would be in there. Anyone else ready for a fifth round? Let's see. Commissioner McCroskey took me up. Yes.
You opened the door.
I did.
I just wanted to say that there are pilot projects going on right in the Antelope Valley and at LA Unified. There are other really interesting pilots. But some of the pilots that are going on, I think we would find particularly informative. Trying to figure out where those institutional partners are and what they see as the challenges and the barriers in getting families to the door. And some of them have to do with institutional policies. Some of them have to do with, as Dr. Ferrer talked about very beautifully, just the strange convolutions of program design. But some of them have to do with institutional policies within the county. The way that we frame things and send people, et cetera. It's, this is the time for this discussion. And that's so fabulous to hear us ready to engage in it.
Diana, did you get all that? That was a lot.
I also have many pages of notes.
I know you do. I would say, but first, my question is, you mentioned 12 hospitals that we run the Welcome Baby Program. Can you name them? Can you tell me what they are or tell me?
I can.
Okay, great. I'm ready.
Antelope Valley Hospital, North Ridge Hospital, Providence Holy Cross, Valley Presbyterian Hospital, M&amp;8 Hospital, California Hospital Medical Center, St. Francis Medical Center, Martin Luther King Community Hospital, Miller's Hospital in Long Beach, St. Mary's Medical Center, Providence Little Company of Mary and Torrance.
Thank you. That's helpful to know. On your, I think, second to the last slide, we talked a lot about Proposition 1 and the impact, the unknown impact. Do we have any idea how or if state support will be impacted, to use your term, based on the state, the projected state budget deficit?
I think we're continuing to look at how that may affect countywide home visiting services, given, you know, some of those funding streams are administered by DPH. I think on the First Five LA side, we're continuing to explore and look at the scale of the investment and where we can leverage. I think it's more the sustainability opportunities and strategies that may have a potential.
Got it. I was pleased in the first couple of slides to see that, you know, the role we can always have and should continue to play is innovation. And that while First Five was the first to fund it largely, now everybody, you know, caught up. And so that's, I think, an important role we can always play, that we don't always have to sustain and be the only one funding. We can innovate, you know, so government can finally catch up and figure out that it's a safe, reliable, good investment. So I think that's a good thing. I love the in-person visiting. Thank you, Dr. Ferrer, for making me think differently about, you know, even our own language choice. And I appreciated you coming back to talk about targeted flexibility because when you first talked about, you know, we shouldn't, you know, rely solely on evidence-based practices, I thought, but you know, the problem with that is, I think there's a fear associated with innovation and following non-evidence-based models, particularly when revenues are restricted. We're comfortable throwing everything against the wall when the money is flowing. But when it's not, I think that's when we tend to naturally get more conservative. So I appreciate it when you, second round, talked about targeted flexibility. That I can wrap my head around because I just don't want us to be afraid of failure and the fear of potentially wasting our limited resources by not investing in something that we know will deliver. But your concept of targeted flexibility helped me kind of come full circle in my own thinking. What else? So we talked about one health plan, getting with the program. I'm clear that it can be a long time. What's unique about that contract that we can uplift to help the other plans understand why it is in their best interest to engage in this work?
Those are ongoing conversations, of course, as Dr. Ferrer well knows. There's a lot of shared.
All the health plans are signing on.
Okay.
So to our, you know, we'll have contracts with all the health plans for some form of home visiting support. I think there are negotiations around the target population. There are negotiations. I mean, we've asked for more expansive permissions. In some cases, that we're trying to do obviously some work with people who are unhoused. And again, trying to do work with people who get a referral from a provider. Or, you know, so I don't, I would say it's positive.
Okay.
But cumbersome.
Got it. Fair enough. That I understand. That's called government.
But the managed care plans are good. They really pretty much, I think they're, I think Molina Health is the only one I have a question mark about.
Okay.
Everybody else is at the table.
And we do host quarterly meetings with all the healthcare plans and have continued.
Okay, then I feel, I feel better. All right. Excellent. With that, any public comment on Agenda Item 14?
No sixth round?
I'm gonna, I'm not gonna look to my left or right.
I am confirming there are no public comments, Madam Chair.
Because I think we've commented enough for everybody. Thank you very much for the presentation. That was really informative and clearly we were engaged. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item 15. Again, this is informational overview of the California January. Oh, here we go. The California January Fiscal Year 2024-25 Budget. Maybe my answer will be here or not. Yeah, right. I, yeah, I understand. Good afternoon.
I was here at the beginning, so I know that it's not too late to say Happy New Year. So Happy New Year, even in February. Before we dive into what we saw or didn't see in the January state budget, I wanted to give you an overview of what the next 15 minutes will look like. We'll provide, again, a general overview of the Governor's proposed budget with information on what we saw and what we didn't see. Then we'll review our 2024 policy agenda and how we use it to guide our work, followed by briefly digging into the key budget pieces related to our work within families, communities, early learning, and health systems. However, included in your ED report, there is a link to a memo with much more detail, even though we're just going to briefly touch upon it today. We'll then walk you through what the next couple of months will look like for the state budget process and for First Five LA's advocacy work. And then finally, we'll close with questions for all you, for all of you to guide our work and opportunities for comments as well. So the Governor released his state budget proposal for 2425 on January 10 for our Office of Government Affairs and Public Policy Team. This is the opening ceremony of the Olympics, the coin toss at the beginning of the Super Bowl Championship, or for me personally, the first notes of Usher's Super Bowl halftime performance on Sunday. You get how exciting this is for the team. The proposed budget includes 291.5 billion in total spending with about 208.7 billion in general spending. Originally, the Legislative Analyst Office predicted a much higher deficit than what the Governor's proposed budget revealed. This shortfall is attributed to a decline in revenue in '22, '23 as a result of hiring, of higher borrowing costs and reduced investments that cooled the state's economy and an overall lower tax collection. The federal tax filing extension last year also meant that the legislator did not have a complete picture until the end of the fiscal year. Given this fiscal reality, the Governor framed his initial budget proposal as one about keeping promises and accountability during a period of revenue normalization, referencing the large budget surpluses in previous years. Now, with a context setting, I wanted to quickly go over our 2024 policy agenda. The policy agenda is an authorizing document for First Five LA's policy and advocacy work, clarifying the federal, state, and local policy priorities that we can engage in. We use the policy agenda to inform and prioritize administrative, legislative, and budget work to align with and help advance our strategic plan. The policy agenda is not an advocacy agenda, and this is an important distinction because the policy agenda is more expansive and holistic than a regular legislative agenda. It provides guidance and opportunities for action. It provides guidance and opportunities for action and helps for us to say, this is not us, or this is not within our scope of work. When it comes to the state budget, we look at it through the lens of the four areas highlighted in our policy agenda and those that you see on the slide, which are essentially our family support work, our early intervention, our health systems, early learning, and communities. So with that, we're going to begin to look at what the budget set. Under our family supports, we saw funding to increase CalWorks' maximum aid payment levels by 0.8% beginning on October 1. This is in addition to the 2.6% statutory increase for '23-'24. Increasing aid payments was an important priority for First Five LA last year as it helps, as it helps this, as it helps set the stage for children to thrive by reducing economic insecurity at the household level. Unfortunately, there was also a general fund at about $55 million provision for '23-'24 and a reduction of $71 million beginning in '24-'25 and for that ongoing stabilization under CalWorks. These programs were created to strengthen CalWorks families, to ensure housing, mental health, safety, and family stability, and may impact families still struggling to recover from the financial impact of COVID. In our health systems priority, as mentioned, there were fewer than expected cuts. One highlight in the budget release was Newsom's choice to maintain funding for CalAim efforts. The Governor also plans to maintain $8 billion across California Health and Human Services Department to expand the continuing of behavioral health treatment and infrastructure capacity and transform the system for providing behavioral health services to children and youth. There are some delays in spending, including the return to the full implementation of service provider rate reform for developmental services. Briefly and quickly, for our early learning work, we were happy to see that the Governor maintains funding for childcare and development programs, including the local support for them, and funding to continue to implement the current MOU with Childcare Providers United, or CCPU. We're also happy to see the continued commitment of a total of 200,000 new spaces by the end of fiscal year '26-'27. We did see, however, a delay in funding for the preschool, for the California Preschool TKM Full Day Kindergarten Facilities Grant Program. Finally, as it relates to our community's work, we did see that the budget still maintains investments to help foster, to help foster health, resilient, and equitable food systems, as well as ongoing funding to the universal school meals, and a $3.4 billion to continue to address homelessness throughout the state. Unfortunately, one critical delay that we want to highlight is one to the Cleanup Vulnerable Communities Initiative Program as part of the Department of Toxic Substance Control. This funding will continue to address cleanup efforts in the southeast LA area due to the contamination of the now-shuttered Excite Battery Factory, as well as other impacted communities and communities throughout the state. To wrap up the discussion on the January state proposal, we wanted to share with you an overview of the budget calendar. From January to May, state policymakers engage in discussions to draft revisions to this proposal. The product of these negotiations and estimated tax revenue will restart in a, will restart in a May revise. Between May and June, it is the final opportunity for stakeholders to provide input to the final budget, with the deadline of passing a state budget for fiscal year '24-'25 being June 15. Now, to get a better look at the year ahead and where we are now, which is that bright red dot that says you are here, we're going to walk through the advocacy roadmap and board engagement calendar. This year is the second year of a two-year legislative cycle, which began at the beginning of January. Throughout January and February, OGAAP will monitor and will continue to monitor any actions related to the Governor's budget, including budget committee hearings held by the state and the Assembly. This leads us to the first, for the, to the annual First Five Advocacy Day, which our team participated in yesterday at the State Capitol, where we met with four legislative offices to discuss First Five LA's childhood budget priorities. Legislators were engaged, asked questions, and were able to discuss how we can continue to move our priorities forward together. And if you're wondering why you weren't invited this year, because I know some of you have joined us, we're planning for a much larger advocacy day meeting in April, where we hope to invite commissioners to participate at the State Capitol. So we'll have more information about that soon. Also in February, and in collaboration with our Capitol Advocate, California Strategies, OGAAP will review any First Five LA policy agenda-aligned legislative proposals introduced by the bill introduction deadline of February 16. Again, OGAAP is making plans for a First Five LA-specific advocacy day in Sacramento in April to meet with our LA County legislative members to discuss our overall approved budget and legislative priorities by then. Once confirmed, we'll make sure to share the date with you all and invite you to participate if your schedule permits. Looking forward to later in the year, the last date of the current legislative session is on August 31, and the Governor has until September 30 to sign or veto any bills. Until then, OGAAP will continue to work with partners and advocate for state legislation aligned with our policy agenda for 2024. And that concludes our overview of the January budget. We do have a couple of questions to really guide and help us guide our work. Specifically, what are your agencies reacting, responding to the state's budget proposal? And how can First Five LA best strengthen our alignment with LA County budget and legislative priorities again? Thank you.
Questions or comments? I look forward to the, yes, Dr. Ferrer.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much. I really want to compliment you on the expansive overview and particularly on including environmental justice issues, especially what's going on with Excite. I'm not really sure how it's possible that there's not going to be money to continue that cleanup. It's such an injustice. But, you know, I want to just applaud you for combing through and noting where these environmental justice issues have terrible impacts on health and well-being of families who live there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ferrer.
Speaking of that, do we know if that is a reduction by $175 million? Or is it a zeroing out of state investment?
We're thinking that it's a zeroing out of state investment. We have to look into the detail of what specifically are the pieces that are being taken out and then compare it with previous years.
Yeah, that's not going to happen. Yeah, that's not going to happen. Yeah, good try.
It's so sad to, like, put it out.
I agree, but that's not going to happen.
It will be a specific talking point with our members come April, especially the members that serve that area.
Right, right. We won't be the only ones talking about it, I'm sure. So just everyone keep in mind the April date, and we'll hear from staff about what that date will be. And we'll all try to make it. Any other questions or comments? I understand the Senate appointed a new budget chair this morning. My former colleague, Senator Weiner, is now budget chair. I sent him a text and said, if you need any help, call me.
Our team is also in the process of sending him a congratulatory letter as well. I'm so excited.
All right, any other questions on the state budget update? Seeing none, any public comment on Agenda Item 15?
Confirming there are no public comments on this item.
Thank you. This is an informational purposes item. Thank you very much, Felia, we appreciate you. Moving on to general public comment, Item 16. And we've got one person who's filled out a speaker card, Andy Yam with Rising Communities. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. And my name is Andy, I'm a policy analyst for Rising Communities. The anchor CBO for Best Start Region 2 in Sheriff Mitchell's District. I'm joined by my colleague Glenda Lenares, Director of Community Resilience at Rising Communities. And I've just come today to share a quick update within First Five LA's Best Start Program. On January 8 of this year, Rising Communities has officially opened our Mothers Rising for Guaranteed Basic Income Serving the ZIP codes in Best Start Region 2, covering the communities of West Athens, Broadway Manchester, Watts Wilbrook, and Compton East Compton. This program entails $500 a month for 100 mothers who are pregnant or have children ages 0 to 2 over the span of two years as we aim to expand to three. Enrollment for this program closes Sunday on February 4. At close, we receive 2,277 total applications. 300 folks will then be chosen by lottery based on Best Start community with eligibility screening starting tomorrow. I will be there onsite tomorrow. And then through the month of February to find our final cohort of 100 mothers. We thank First Five LA and the communities team for their support on making this program a reality. Please do not hesitate to reach out if you would like more information.
Thank you for that. I chair the Counties for Guaranteed Income Committee nationally. In fact, I'll be at our affinity organization, NACO, National Association of County Officers. I don't know what the L is, officers, I guess. Conference in DC this week, and I'll be presenting Monday with several guaranteed income county leaders across the country. So thank you for that. Proud of the work that we're continuing to do. LA Times did an amazing article where they featured three unhoused people and the opening paragraph said, you know, if we, the common thread through these three stories is if there had been a guaranteed income, they could have very likely avoided being houseless. So I think it's an innovative model that I'm proud to see continue to expand across the country and grow. So thank you for that, Andy, appreciate it. Any public comment via phone or online?
Confirming there are no public comments via phone or online.
Excellent. Is there any other business that we should consider before we adjourn today's meeting?
I wonder if Ms. Voe can give us an overview of the happenings after the meeting? Any direction forward and where we will be?
Yes, thank you for that, Carla. So given that we are completing the board meeting a little bit earlier, we are going to be having an informal meet and greet for the board to speak with our LT, our leadership team members. And just a reminder to our board, given that we are bound by Brown Act requirements to ensure that we are not congregating more than four board members at any given moment and not discussing any formal business. But with that, we are going to adjourn, and we will have refreshments and snacks brought out here into the NPR. And that's it.
As long as there are cookies and things to eat, we won't talk about business. Let me say Happy Lunar New Year. Congratulations. Kobe's got a statue as of 3 o'clock today out in front of the, so there's lots of things we can talk about other than this business because we've talked about all the business during today's meeting. Thank you very much. Our next regular board meeting will, is scheduled for Thursday, March 14. We'll see you then. We stand adjourned.